And announcements. Do we have any public comments and announcements?
Morning, Ms. Mary.
Good morning. So I'm happy to see you guys again this year, but I'm also sad. So River Blitz, we're going to be going at it again this year. River Blitz Round Two is going to be taking place this Saturday on October tenth. You know, unfortunately, this year our green spaces and natural resources around our area have taken a beating. There's no other way to say it. There's illegal dumping and littering is on the rise. I mean, it's not just here in Eddy County, it's nationwide in response to, we like to say it's because of COVID, coming from Keep America Beautiful. So it's not something that's only happening here. Like I said, in Eddy County, it's happening nationwide. People are, you know, were cooped up for so long, they want to get out. Unfortunately, with more people hitting these areas comes more trash and people being irresponsible. So it's not just here. I do want to give you guys that, you know, peace of mind there. But unfortunately, we're finding the need to do it again. But luckily, we have the resources in place to do so. We're able to bring good people out. Quite a few people have already volunteered. There's are going to be groups that are headed up out at Black River already. We've got Lake Avalon, we've got Diving Rock. Our beach area is always a given, but we do have a group dedicated already to doing lower Tansil and the beach area. And the majority of people just show up that morning whenever we do it. So we look for more people to come out that morning. So we're excited, this bittersweet to be holding it twice a year. But the county's always been super helpful and they haven't failed this time. We've been working with the Public Works Department again to get containers out to where we need them to be. The city's going to have a roll-off set up at the rec center as well. So if you guys don't have anything going on on Saturday too, come on out. But we're going to be doing this and it's always a good time. It's always cool to have the kids come out. It's good to have community members come out and help, you know, get the area cleaned again. And it'll help too. We have had requests in the past to do a River Blitz twice a year. But this year just propelled it that much further because the need is there. So we're looking forward to it. We'll be out there. We plan on wrapping it up around eleven, eleven-thirty. But we have people that are dedicated already to camping out at Diving Rock. They want to make a weekend of it. And that's what happens every other, every other River Blitz too. So we've got some good people here in town that want to take care of our, of our community and our river areas. So this hasn't changed anything else. We've had a lot of really good cleanups already this year. We've done Six Mile Down, we've done Derrick Road, we've done Boyd Drive. We did clean up the Gwadjuara, so I know you guys will hear about that in a little bit, but it's just non-stop. This has been a really busy year for us, so I apologize. But thank you, and that's what's happening next weekend.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, any other public comments? Okay, moving on. Number three, bid awards. RFP twenty dash oh six Nursing Services, Kristin L. Botany.
Good morning, Kristin.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner.
Good morning.
I do have RFP twenty dash oh six Nursing Services for our detention center. This was solicited on the twentieth of August. We did receive four proposals from Quick Response Staffing, Worldwide Travel Staffing, Staff Today, and Cross Country Staffing. Evaluations were done for the proposals and they were all responsive and suitable. But the recommendation from detention center staff and I goes to Quick Response Staffing for this RFP.
Questions, Mr. Crockett.
Yes, sir.
Mr. McCutcheon. Mr. Woods? I have none. Entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve RFP twenty dash zero six Nursing Services for the Detention Center going with Quick Response Staffing.
Second. Have a motion and second. Call for the vote.
Crockett, yes. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on. We're going to move into public hearing. O dash twenty dash one hundred extending for ten years, Eddy County Ordinance O dash ten dash fifty-seven entitled Non-Exclusive Franchise Agreement for U.S. Cable on a Non-Exclusive Franchise Agreement for TDS Broadband Services LLC. Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing.
Chairman, I make a motion. Can we open the public hearing?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay, staff comments. Looks like we already have one sitting.
We've got one sitting here. Jason and I have just.
Five dollar fine right there.
Wes and, and Jason and I have worked on a number of these other franchises that are going to be upcoming in the next couple of weeks. This one doesn't have the same provision in, that we do in the others. And what we, what Wes has run into problems in the past is in these, in these franchises, we've told people, if we need to get into our right-ofways, you're going to have to move your stuff. You get sixty days to do it after we notify you. If you don't, we're going to have some kind of penalty unless there's an agreement reached with Wes or with Jason about the move. That is not in this, but because we brought it up honestly when we had one that was coming up that we've had a problem with and cost us about forty thousand dollars probably and a lot of time because they wouldn't get out there and move their facilities. I don't know what TDS would say about this. I don't know if we've had the problems in the past. You know, what we, we put in the others that they're going to be, they're going to have to comply with the permitting process that is established and run by Jason and the Public Works Department. A lot of the times, Jason, he doesn't know what's in his right-ofway because they just don't tell him. They don't come tell him anything. And so Wes and Jason both said, we've got to know what's in our rights. And so I think we could either add a little provision in here about they will comply with the permitting and policies and procedures that are established by, that are in the Public Works Department's bailiwick here. And if they'll do that, then that's what Jason wants to put in here. And Wes probably does too, because we do run into problems with these people. Now admittedly, the others, let's just be honest about it. The others, we put a penalty in it. If they don't get it moved out of there in sixty days, we're going to make them pay five hundred bucks a day. Unless they come to Jason and Wes and make an agreement beforehand saying, we can't get that, those facilities out of there in that timeframe, which they'll work with them if it's ninety days or a hundred twenty days, as long as they know it's going to get done, that after that timeframe, there's going to be a penalty. We ran into a problem over in Artesia where it cost us a pretty good chunk of money and a lot of time. And we had to end up going back to the gas company, Mexico Gas, and they assisted us and tried to compensate us for all that time that we ran into a problem. But that's, that's somewhat where we are. I think we could add a provision in here, but we, I doubt seriously we're going to get a quick agreement from them if we put in the five hundred dollars a day. They're, they're not going to just have an agreement.
Ray Jason?
Well, he's one caught me right before the meeting. He said, man. And I did the attorney's copy.
I was going to say, we don't have to do email.
Just smile. I was Ray Jason would take two weeks to tell you.
We're not trying to be unfair or bad neighbors. We're trying to encourage communication. As everyone knows up here in some way, shape, form, or fashion, we've had issues with utility companies on several projects and in several forums. We don't want to be unreasonable. We want them to come to us and tell us what they're doing so that we can work with them. So we also need to get communication in there for when they don't perform.
That's right.
Yeah. You know, when, when we ask them to and we try to communicate with them and then we get put at the bottom of the list because we don't have no teeth is what's usually happened for. Or when we ask them to move because we have projects and, you know, they want to charge us two hundred thousand dollars to move their, their utilities. You know, that's not, we don't charge you to lease our right-ofway. And in return, you need to work with us when we come through and want to expand or update our roads, which usually doesn't happen, so it's not usually a deal. But when we do, when we have a bypass road that's going to come in and we need to move some of these utilities, they need to want to help us. So that's, and, and he mentioned the permit policy. I'll give you, I don't know if this is appropriate. It's about to do it. We do have a permit policy and procedure that we will be presenting preliminary to the commission and county manager here in the next couple of weeks with the goal of having that implemented and approved by January first and implemented by the new calendar year. So it is coming, but I would like to make the recommendation that we need to make this one uniform with what we're going to do with everybody else. With Excel, with the Plateau Wireless, with. Any of us.
Anybody else.
So I don't know how we would accomplish that. Maybe not here today, but that would be my recommendation.
Wes probably has. He's had, I know he's had some problems.
So it may not specifically be TDS, but it speaks to the overarching issue of having franchise standards.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners? These issues have cost the county hundreds of thousands of dollars whenever you look at two different projects, one being Stanpipe and Lee, that intersection did, with the amount of time it took to get the utilities moved. And then we had that other issue on that CDBG project up in Artesia. And a lot of these projects are grant-funded, so we have a timeframe that we've got to have that money spent by. And whenever we've got the utilities not making a priority to get them relocated, it really puts a bind on us. And it also puts a bind on the contractor, you know, they're out there trying to get the work done and utilities aren't getting moved. So they're having to charge the county time that they're not being able to, to get their work done. So it just kind of puts a little bit more on the, the utilities to help get the relocations made.
I think the extreme examples are eighty-two, eastbound out of Artesia. That was, that was all right-ofway issues within the DOT. The utilities or those that were in the right-ofway, not just, they're going to have the same issue on two eighty-five here. So anything we can do to improve our position, and again, as Jason said, we, we want to be good partners and good neighbors. But that's a, that's a reciprocal two-way street. It's not a one-way take advantage deal by utility or county.
Then we have a law set in, in the Hall Agreements that they have exactly.
That's what we have, that's what we have planned in all the other franchises, but we did that after we did this one. So we can go back to TDS. And we're not single, single.
In Hall Agreements, and we need to have a large enough penalty on it so that when, when they don't, when they don't go by what the agreement says, then they're penalized. To do that because holding up, like you said, a lot of times we want to have ties based on grant money. And it says that we should even issue a notice of receipt. That's what the state standard is from Nebraska County. We should even issue a notice of receipt without having all the go.
Like our utilities or?
No, like, like their utilities.
Yes, I mean, that would be in an ideal world. They'd do them before we fix a road, but.
Yes, sir. I know Wes is having trouble writing. I'm not going to mention who it is. He calls, he calls, he calls. They just ignore him. He sends an email. They ignore him. And we got to have some teeth in here. I mean, we've got to have it. Okay, well, that's, we didn't say that. Wes and I didn't say that.
That's the issue. I, you know, our consultants or us try to get ahold of the utilities and set up a meeting with them so that we can plan these things out whenever they're not sending us emails back or they're not returning our phone calls. You know, it makes it really tough for us to get a project started without having a plan on what they're going to do to get it done.
So we need to have that law in all the agreements. And we need to have a substantial penalty that encourages them to get it done within the timeframe that they have been approved. And we need the whole fast. When, when we do have that, we need to enforce this penalty. Do we have that authority?
We do. If it's, if it's in the agreement, if, if they don't agree, we're going to have problems. Before then, they don't have a franchise to use their right-ofway.
Well, that's what I was thinking. If they don't agree, if they don't agree, where do they go?
Yeah.
That and, and then they would have to follow the policy to the T as far as how much we're going to charge them per, what is it called? The stick?
Rod.
Per stick.
Per rod.
Rod. And so then, then the cost goes way up. So. And, and we want to also put in there that if they're communicating with us and they say, look, this job's going to take us ninety days or eighty days, we can at least plan for that. And, and then we set it at the ninety or eighty days, however long they said it'll take them to move them. And then we can work with them.
We can always amend the agreement for that project.
Yes, and that's what we have in these others. We have a provision where the county, through these two guys, can, can.
But they need, it doesn't need to be verbal, it needs to be written.
Written, as it says in writing.
Everything needs to be written.
And, and like we said, this is to encourage communication instead of, you know, as soon as we get done building a road, they're coming through and installing a power line, which is what we're facing now. Or just going out and doing it and we don't know what they're doing. And then we go out there and there's four water holes down a line because they hit the water line three times. So.
Well, we were out, Jason and I were out looking and they were setting power poles and they had the augers out in the middle of our new road. No pads or anything under it, just the augers out sitting, out on the stabilizers sitting on our road and pushing in the new paving, which is deteriorating the paving. And, and it's just a brand-new road.
Pretty uncalled for. And.
Is that not a true story?
That's a true story. The reason we want to set it up like this is because Jason and the county's policies and procedures and permitting process may change over time. So we're going to say, this thing's a ten-year, fifteen-year, whatever franchise. The permitting and procedures that are then in effect are what you have to comply with. So if he had to change something later on, I mean, they're going to comply with it. Or they're going to have a problem. Are they going to pay?
So then is the, the objective then would be to pull this back and insert this in this particular franchise agreement?
And see what P B T. I think that's the thing we've got to do in light of what we're doing with all the others.
We want them to be consistent.
Consistent.
I agree with that.
And it, Jason has said, I don't even know what's in my right-ofway half the time because they sneak out there and put it in. And they don't have any safety, you know, protection out there. They just stick.
There's a lot of fast lot.
What can we do to penalize them for that?
What? We got a plan. We have a plan. We got a plan. Go identify it and then go back to the owner, operators and give them the, yeah, absolutely. Charge them for the right-ofways that have just been taken as, oh, it's okay. It's also going to be an initiative of our new permitting policy and procedures to implement a G I S process that when they come and do permits, we're going to map where, what we have in our right-ofways. So it's, we're really hoping to update how we kind of track what we got where, which is why we're wanting to do this as well.
Okay. Okay, other staff comments? Okay, we'll move on to public comments. Three-minute time limit. Do we have any public comments? Okay, county attorney comments and questions. We've already had that done. Commissioner comments and questions. Commissioner Crockett?
I do not have any. Thank you.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir. I agree with everything you said.
Commissioner Woods?
I don't have anything.
Okay, I have none. So let's move on to entertain a motion and a second by the board to table this until they move, till they bring a new franchise agreement?
Is that what we want to do?
Do you want to table, deny?
Table, but we've got to come back to this one.
I think we should just deny.
Let's deny it and then we, and we go back to work, go back to drawing board. I don't think it's going to take a couple of little changes to this, what we have today.
Well, I don't want to approve it until, until we're, we have a final.
And admittedly, it's going to make us have to republish this. And it'll have to come back, same way. We're going to have to.
Yeah, we'll have to have a whole different public.
Public hearing, that's right.
Yeah, exactly. We'll have to redo this. So do we need to?
We close this one out as denied and state that we will bring back a new ordinance with a new public hearing with revised franchise agreement in it. That would be the motion?
I think that's.
I think we've got to have a motion like that.
One of you make it. That works for me.
Because you're so eloquent with your motions. Yeah, because, yeah.
I need him to make it.
Okay. I don't even know. I've already lost what the motion is. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we deny the public hearing zero dash twenty dash one hundred extending for ten years, Eddy County Ordinance zero dash ten dash fifty-seven entitled Non-Exclusive Franchise Agreement for U.S. Cable and Non-Exclusive Franchise Agreement for TDS Broadband Services, replacing this with the changes that staff is going to come up with to come back to another public hearing. How about that? You guys voted on me. I mean, this is, it's your fault at this point, so.
Okay, do I have a second?
Hang on, hang on. Is, is that right?
So I think, I think the motion needs to be rephrased. We're not denying the public hearing. We've had, we're in the public hearing. We're going to deny the ordinance O dash ten dash fifty-seven for reasons discussed during the comments. And then we'll, we will bring back a new ordinance at a later time with a new public hearing. That would be the motion.
You make that motion?
Well, we got, we got a pending motion out there. Can it die for like a second?
Well, he helped you correct it. I think we're okay.
Okay, okay, it's corrected. Okay.
I'll amend my second and he can amend his motion.
So moved. I like that one way better.
Well played, sir.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote?
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Call for the vote?
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay, moving to the trailing agenda. Approved commission meeting minutes for September the twenty-second, twenty twenty. Do we have any changes or comments? Commissioner Crockett? Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Woods?
No, sir.
Okay, I'd like a motion to accept that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the commission meeting minutes for September twenty-second, twenty twenty as presented.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Call for the vote?
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay, moving to two. Amend correct commission meeting minutes for September the first, twenty twenty, trailing agenda number five. Robin Van Natta.
That's pretty self-explanatory. Keep our attention. The motion was stated incorrectly. And we just need to get clarified for the record.
Okay.
There were, there were three, three words in there that got picked up from your comments that didn't need to be there.
Right, the thirty-five hundred, it wasn't a thirty-five hundred dollars, it was a thirty-five hundred deal, account number. And it, so it didn't match what you actually did.
So we just need to get the, so that the minutes are correct, the public record is correct. If you would read the recommended motion.
Okay, can we get a motion or?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we amend and correct the commission meeting minutes from September first, twenty twenty. And I will make a new motion to accept the recommendation for the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty surplus with five million dollars to the Road Construction Fund for matching DOT monies and committing the seven million, four twenty-five, one thirty-nine to the Capital Improvement Fund, holding back ten percent of the two added funds or one million, two, two forty-two, five thirteen as a reserve to be put where the commission would see fit to be best allocated due to emergencies.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote?
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay, set a special commission meeting to certify the canvas results for the November third, twenty twenty general election. Robin Van Natta.
We have, the, the ninth is the first day. We have to have it done by the twelfth, so we'll be ready by the ninth, whenever you guys are.
That a Monday?
Uh, it's the ninth of Monday, I think it is. So whatever's convenient for you.
I can do the ninth or the tenth.
It's up to you. We'll be ready.
Yeah, either one.
Ernie?
I'm good.
I need three of you.
Yes.
Yes.
So the ninth, oh, at nine o'clock?
I think at seven.
I was thinking, I was thinking like six thirty.
Oh, one thirty. How about three thirty in the afternoon?
No.
No.
No, no.
All right, so the ninth?
Eight.
Uh, eight thirty?
Eight thirty sounds great.
Eight thirty, okay. I had to eight thirty.
You know, Ernie and I, we will be here at five in the morning if you let us.
That's right.
No, thank you. Okay, that's great with me. I'm good. So we need a motion and a.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Set the meeting?
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We set a special commission meeting for October, or November the ninth at eight thirty a.m. to canvas November the third election.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote?
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay, Treasurer's Report for August twenty twenty, Laurie Pruitt. Okay, Revenue Report for September twenty twenty, Roberta Smith.
Morning, Roberta.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So for the September twenty twenty Revenue Report for Gross Receipts Tax, first time in a really long time we haven't met our monthly target. We just barely missed it. We got one point one million dollars in gross receipts tax, which still puts us pretty close to about even on gross receipts tax. We're just a little bit above where we need to be. For oil and gas, we did get quite a bit of an increase mainly due from oil prices jumping from, you know, in the mid twenties to the mid thirties from that April business activity month to the June activity month. So, and our production levels are about where we, well, we predicted about nine million barrels per month and about twenty-five mil, uh, twenty-five dollars per barrel. So we're quite a bit over that because we've been around thirteen million barrels per month, which is quite a bit higher than what we budgeted for. So we collected one point seven million dollars in oil and gas. We haven't got any equipment money yet. That usually comes in December. So we are still a little bit short on oil and gas receipts as a whole. But between the two for gross receipts and oil and gas, we're right about even right now, so.
Okay.
Stand for any questions.
Questions?
I don't have any.
Question?
No, sir.
Question? Okay, I'll take, entertain a motion to approve it?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Revenue Report for September two thousand and twenty as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote?
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay, Budget versus Actual, August Revenue versus Expenses, Roberta Smith.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the August Budget versus Actual, we should be about seventeen percent for monies collected and expenses. We're a little bit over, we're about thirty percent for revenue and twenty-five percent for expenses. However, a big portion of that is transfers. We did a lot of transfers this year, which have already been done. So about seventeen point six million dollars on both sides is transferred. So we're probably around eleven percent on revenue, true revenue collected and about twelve percent expensed on true expenses. So, uh, general funds, if you want to scroll up a little bit. Scroll up just a little bit to get to the revenue totals. So for general fund revenue, uh, we've collected about twenty percent, but again, uh, ten million dollars of that is transfers. Uh, so about seventeen percent of our general fund on both sides is transfers right now, so again, that takes a little bit to catch up. On the expense side, same thing, we're quite a bit over due to transfers, but if you look at each individual department, uh, on the far right-hand side right there, there's very few departments that are, um, over that seventeen percent. This is also, um, before we did budget adjustments, last commission meeting, you guys approved the budget adjustments, so everyone should be aligned because we did get some grant money in and there were some, some projects that were being done, so those have been adjusted and aligned. And then for the road department, I believe they're about ninety-one percent, uh, collected in revenue, which again, majority of that's transfers. And for expense-wise, they were a little bit over, uh, if you want to scroll up, I think it was about twenty-five percent. Uh, but that was mainly due to, okay, so twenty percent. They're about twenty-one percent on expenses. That was mainly due to, um, reaching, uh, Jason had reached his, um, road maintenance budget. We had budgeted quite a bit of money in there and he'd reached it. But again, this was before budget adjustments were made, so you guys had allotted him some more money to put in that road maintenance line item, so that was the majority of the reason why he was over budget. So in the September report, you'll see that number change.
Hey, questions?
No, sir.
Question?
No, sir.
Questions?
No.
Okay, do I entertain a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve budget versus actual, uh, August revenue and expenses.
Second.
Have a motion and second, call for the vote?
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, unfreeze fiscal year twenty twenty-one, annual step increase, Roberta Smith.
Forgot this was on the table.
Sure you did.
She was just going to let you take care of it.
You don't get off that easy.
So when we were starting the budget process, you know, we started fairly early, end of January, beginning of February, we had a pretty good outlook on revenue at the time, you know, COVID hadn't hit, oil and gas prices were good. Uh, we had originally stuck in the budget, uh, market increases, annual step increases, we even put a cola in there, um, along with, you know, the sheriff's incentives. And then, of course, we asked departments to put in all their stuff. As we were going through the budget process and when gas started to have a more grim outlook, we reevaluated several times, up until the time we did our final, uh, evaluation of the budget, we brought it to you guys in, I think it was the end of April, beginning of May. We, Al and I took a closer look at it, you know, we were budgeting quite a bit higher, we were expecting to budget around thirty million dollars in oil and gas, where we ended up, you know, budgeting fourteen million, so that was a huge decrease in revenues, so at the time, we decided to take out annual step increases, that was one of very many items that we took out of the budget. So, we have since kind of reevaluated, like I had said in the revenue report, for the first six months, we were expecting about twenty-five dollars price per barrel and about nine million barrels, so we're already um, over that projection, even though for oil and gas and, um, gross receipts tax were about even, we will be picking up, uh, because that production level and the oil prices are going to be quite a bit higher, so by November, uh, we do expect to be, uh, probably slightly over a million dollars over in that. So we do have a better outlook on the revenue, um, going into the new calendar year. So we're bringing this to you to essentially unfreeze the annual step increases. This would affect about two hundred and fifty employees, uh, we have about three hundred and fifty-four active employees. Uh, so it would affect a majority of employees for their annual step increases with the cost of about a hundred and sixty thousand countywide. Uh, and that would include benefits. So, and the majority of that obviously is in general fund, about a hundred and twenty thousand of that is in general fund.
Okay, questions?
No, sir, I support this fully, I think we have to take care of our employees and, um, I feel like we need to put this back in seeing as how we had such a large surplus and our revenues are higher than we have projected.
The capital improvement fund, what? Is that part of the money we've set aside?
So the capital improvement fund, that's the suggestion is that this money would come out of it. The three hundred and fifty-four thousand you see up there is all that's left out of the surplus, now that's not including that one point two million that we're setting aside for that ten percent. So that's still in there, it will remain in there until instructed, so that's what's come out of there so far, that five million for the NMDOT, uh, the two point five for Jason's road maintenance and then the road construction, three point one, and then, of course, the sheriff's body cameras that were presented to you guys last time, so we have about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars left of that. So we would be asking to, to take it out of there.
So you could take three hundred and fifty thousand there and then a hundred and?
No, it'll maybe be about a hundred and sixty.
We'll take a hundred and sixty out of the three fifty. Okay. So there'd be a, there'd be another hundred and seventy thousand remaining in that particular balance from the twenty twenty surplus. Okay, so let's give it a full. It doesn't, and so it would be paid for without counting on additional revenues that we forecast or reserves.
Or reserves.
Um, I, I'm, I'm in support of taking care of employees all the time. I'm wondering if we're out of the woods yet completely and if we've seen the worst of, of, of things to come. Mr. County Manager, where do you think, where do you think we are? It's, we can't, we can't take this back and I know it's not a, a tremendous amount and would mean a lot for the, for the employees of the county, but, uh, you know, at the same time, I want to be fiscally responsible and see where we're at on here, so. Sure. So, uh, as, as Ms. Roberta said, volumes in, uh, New Mexico are higher than the original predictions in industry and they're above what we projected conservatively. Um, the oil prices, the WTI outlook has been hovering right around forty. Um, there's a lot of speculation about it'll get to here or it'll get to there. But even at forty, we, through the end of the year, we had, we had modeled at twenty-five and then the remaining six months, we modeled at thirty-seven fifty. Um, so our price forecast for the county outlook is lower than the current volumes. I don't, from all that I've seen and the discussions that I've had with some industry folks around here, um, the pace has steadied, if you will. Um, they've, they've finished the work that they were doing and now production is back on. Um, there are, there are ducts to be completed, drilled, uncompleted wells in our portion of the basin, uh, or in the portion of the basin that resides, or is within Eddie County. So, I'm, I'm comfortable making this action. Um, and we'll, we'll look when we get to the end of the year, where price is, where volumes have, um, what I think's going to happen in twenty twenty-one is I think overall volumes are going to start their decline. Um, we may see some rigs pick backed up. The rig count has kind of bottomed out and is, we've seen a few more rigs added. I think twenty twenty-one, some of those companies, uh, will add additional rigs. Um, but it will be dependent on whether or not it's fifty-dollar oil or if it stays at forty, as to how many rigs come in. But I think at forty-dollar oil, if they don't invest any more capital, they can produce what they've, they have developed and, and make margin at that, so. I think with our conservative projection for revenues for the budget year twenty twenty-one, we would be well within our budget, uh, uh, projections with what I understand right now. The, the one, the one element that is, I won't say it's concerning, but it's interesting to watch is the, the GRTs have softened. Um, but we're kind of right at the line. I don't know if they'll soften more going forward. There's, there's that uncertainty about will there be more stimulus from the federal government? What will the state do with its stimulus money? But I think we've kind of, we've kind of, I think we're going to be at a plateau for GRT. I don't know that it will can, will diminish more. I think it's going to be in this, in this million, one point one million dollar range, for the foreseeable future, so. Between that, property taxes and our oil and gas revenue, I think the county budget with this, with this addition will be, will be sound. We won't, we won't have to cut or curtail, we'll still be able to accomplish the roadworks and project works that we've have and we'll have that reserve that we've set aside for emergencies.
Do we track, do we track drilling permits on a monthly basis?
Um, I, I, I haven't been, um, the, the issue with permits is you don't know when they'll execute.
Yep, but they're only good for so long, right?
Well, they've, they've got, they've got quite a window on them. There, there are companies that are obtaining permits on federal lands that would, that would give them a cushion should federal policy change at the end of, or next year. If the elections go one way and there's a change in federal land use policy, there are companies who have banked APDs, approved permits to drill to allow them to continue on despite what those changes may be, or if they come at all. So, that permit, it's not, it, it's not valid for just months, it's valid for many months.
Yeah, I was thinking, six months?
Oh, no, I think.
Well?
Or twenty-four.
Yeah.
So there are folks that have said they have, so I, I don't know specific, but that one company in particular said they have enough permits to drill on federal lands for up to six years.
I, I just knew that the BLM was, had been picked up, had been picking up.
Yeah, no, they're, they're, they are hedging their bets should policy change. If not, they'll continue like they've been doing and continue. The, the, I think the driving force in that activity level is going to be the, the the price so that they can make their margins. I think there's a market correction right now for those that were overextended and had huge debts to service. Those debts are coming due and there, there's a lot of bankruptcies in some of these smaller companies that are occurring because they can't meet their debts. The larger companies that are established in the basin, um, have the ability to make those margins at lower commodity prices. And they have had a lot of development already in place at scale that they can continue to add on, so.
Yeah, and, and the drilling's cheaper today than it's been in a long time.
Right, prices have gone down and demand's low and so if you've got iron sitting, sitting still, it's, you've got to pay for it, so your drilling contract, the day rates are going to come way down.
Yeah.
As will the completion equipment and, and even some of the, some of the project work, you know, for facilities and that type of work, so.
Okay. Do you think further?
I just had one question, is this retroactive, retroactive back to July one?
No, so I will leave that in the motion. If it is passed, if you guys do approve, it will be effective November first. So the employees will see it in their November paychecks, it will not retroactive back.
So anyone who would have had a service date between in July, August, September, October, will get the step increase effective November one, but we won't go retroactive back.
prospectively, yeah.
So that's where they're affected, is their hire date?
Correct, that's.
That's when they usually get their annual.
Yeah. So they'll get the step increase, but no one will have gotten it for the past four months.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we unfreeze the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one annual step increases.
And make it effective November first.
Effective November first.
Not for retroactive.
Correct.
Second.
Have a motion and second, call for the vote?
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roberta.
Okay. Permian Basin Safety Coalition donation, Joshua Mack.
Morning, Josh.
Morning. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the Permian Basin Road Safety Coalition made a donation of sixty thousand dollars in equipment to fire service. So we just want to thank them, um, they had sent, hold on, sorry, pull my notes up. Their objective is to outfit twenty-two counties, throughout the Permian Basin with this rescue equipment. They achieved seven counties so far with two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. They're currently working on getting the rest of the funding for that, along with assisting us with our radio project to purchase radios, so. The equipment's very nice, there's a Strongarm in it, which is utilized for forcing doors, you can use it on vehicle extrication. They also provided our county with a hub to calibrate CO2 monitors. So we will be a location for that. And also in this, they took care of the Guadalupe Rangers and gave them an equipment setup as well, which will help us with car accidents way out there when we're going to help and Van Horn's unavailable. Somebody's trapped in the car and they're having to stand there and wait for us to show up, now they can actually take action, get them out and probably have them on a helicopter before we can get there. So, um, along with this, I attached a letter that I ask for each of you to sign so that we can send it back to them to thank them for their support. Questions, comments?
Question?
No, I just really appreciate the Permian Road Safety.
No, I don't need anything.
Okay, uh, then entertain a motion to accept that donation.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the Permian Road Safety Coalition's donation.
Second.
Have a motion and second, call for the vote?
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Volunteer Department, Fire Department Action Training Update, Joshua Mack.
So I had Rick come with me, um, a couple of months ago, there was some concerns with the amount of training the volunteers were getting. So we tried to address that, it's been an issue since I started here. So we've, um, purchased a online training that y'all approved and these are the numbers that we have since we enacted that back in July first, correct? July first, we, we achieved it, so. Here's per department breakdown of how many students we have enrolled. The total, the total students on the department roles and the percentage that we're at, and then the percentage of courses completed. So if you have any questions.
No, sir.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Does any of these lead to a certification?
Yes, sir, so if they do these trainings, Rick goes out and he does their skills and we will actually sign off for their firefighter one, two hazmat awareness and operations, fire officer one. It's essentially the same exact certification that we have, that we've gone to the state and challenged or taken their classes, same with Carlsbad, Artesia, so we're trying to bring that continuity across the board to where our volunteers, basically if the city of Carlsbad has a job opening and they're taking a lateral, as long as our person has the training and they can perform the skills, they would be able to move into those roles. Which for Artesia, that's going to be a great help for them as they're really shorthanded and I know Chief Hope's always looking for people, so. Once we give them our county cert, they would have to go to the state to challenge to get the IFSEC or the Pro Board certification.
What is the minimum certification they have to have to go out on a call? And we do that training ourselves, right?
Yes, so we do all that training in-house and that's what Rick does and he can go into a little bit more depth on what we try to hit there, but for our policy, it's hazmat firefighter one, minimum, if they're going to be doing interior attack, we'd like them to have firefighter two, and then for any officers, we'd like them to have the officer training.
Okay. Uh, do we need a approval on this?
Can I ask, I ask one question? Mr. Chairman? So, I'm glad to see we've now have a, a means of tracking. Has this tracking helped move course completion along, or is there a mechanism to help? I see we've got forty percent enrolled of the, the total population and, and that's a wide spectrum of, of volunteers and fifteen percent completed. Are the chiefs helping push this training completion so that we can move that percent completed up?
Uh, yes, sir, there are some chiefs. Uh, yes, sir. There are some chiefs that are active in this. Um, I would like to point out that the department roles, that number's skewed because they haven't updated their roles, so we still have people who are on the roles but are active.
Aren't active.
Maybe even retired, moved on, whatever. So, that's the only issue I have with that.
So, maybe we can get, uh, a denotation of active, active volunteer, and then that might, but again, it's, it's about moving them through the material, so.
Yeah.
This is a great way to see that and help them see that.
Yes, sir. It is, and it goes out to them and lets the chiefs know that the, the, you've got folks who are much self-motivated to do this, and then you have some that.
Need a little motivation.
That, or, or they just don't have internet connections.
Ah, fair enough.
Queens is one of those.
What, here in Eddie County? Come on, kidding me, right?
No.
Okay, uh, this was an update. Do we really need a motion? Uh?
No.
No, I wouldn't think so either. Well, we appreciate the information. Moving on to the 2020 revision of the 2019 Volunteer Fire Department Elections, Joshua Mack.
On this one, I do need an approval, and just to notify you guys of changes that have occurred, if you can go down just a little bit. We had, uh, Sonny Hope from Loco Hills retired after fifty years in the fire service, so once this COVID stuff gets cleaned up a little more, we want to do a presentation for him. So, Mark Matthews will be taking over that position. Malaga, we have two new assistant chiefs. And then Happy Valley, they have a new assistant chief who, so Kenny Rayro there, and then Sierra Calderon and Michael Stone in Malaga. Um, we had a resignation as a district chief in Sun Country, so their assistant chief was voted in as the chief, and Keller Crockett is now their assistant chief. So, this is, I just need y'all's approval for these positions to be held by these people, and if you have any questions.
Questions, Commissioner Crockett?
I don't have any.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No, sir.
Do I take, entertain a motion to approve?
Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the, uh, 2020 revision of the 2019 Volunteer Fire Department Elections, as was presented by Joshua Mack.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second? Call for the vote?
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay. HIDA Grant Number G20SN0017A, modification number one, Lennon Leos.
Or?
You look different today.
I'm going to take the, uh, place of Commander Leos. Good morning. Um, this is just a dividend of our participation on the HIDA Executive Board. Um, we had some baseline money come in, extra money that was granted through the, the HIDA Grant, and we were able to gobble up twenty-two thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars of it to benefit Drug Enforcement Operations in Eddie County. So, that's all this is, is, uh, y'all saying, yep, we can have this money and spend it to, uh, make our county safer.
Okay. Do I have a question? Commissioner Crockett?
No, I think this is fantastic.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No.
Okay, you go have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the HIDA Grant, um, Number G20SN0017A, modification number one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second? Call for the vote?
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay, resolution and agreement consent agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have any agreements that we need to pull?
I do not have any, Mr. Chairman.
No, sir.
No.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to accept those. Approve them?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda, as presented, pulling no item.
Second.
Motion and second? Call for the vote?
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, department updates? Do we have any department updates? We do.
Yeah. Morning, Jerry.
Good morning.
I just wanted to, uh, give an update about Clean Up the Gwads, and then a couple of updates on what we've got coming up. Um, I wanted to do a quick committee recognition. Um, unfortunately, Kelsey with the Lincoln National Forest couldn't be here today. Mary had to leave a little bit early. She was on our committee, uh, and Michelle Robertson. But, um, Campfire Industries, could you guys just, you know, I just wanted you guys to kind of put a face with, um, Campfire Industries. They were very instrumental in helping us put this together.
Thank you, guys.
We had close to two-hundred people show, uh, which being an hour out of town, uh, was huge. We picked up over three thousand pounds of fish. That item in and of itself was five hundred pounds. It was an abandoned water tank, uh, and the Lincoln National Forest had been wanting it moved for years, and because of Clean Up the Gwads, that was done. Um, we got an appreciation, and I'm so proud of this. I hope you guys will let me keep it in my office, but, um, we got an appreciation award from the United States Department of Agriculture, Eddie County, uh, for dedicated effort to keep our national forest a clean and safe place for all to enjoy. I'm super proud of this, and I hope you guys are too. Um, we got, uh, a lot of recognition from the Guadalupe Mountains National Forest. They did a huge post. The Lincoln National Forest did a huge post, and XTO, we couldn't have done it without XTO and the many partners that were part of this. So, thank everybody that came out. Um, we'll be posting, and it was COVID-safe. We had masks available. Uh, the meals were COVID-friendly, and so, um, got a lot of pictures with Smokey Bear. We actually had some, uh, sheriff's deputies drive through there. I don't know if they had heard about it, or they just saw the signs that they came through. We took very good care of them. We fed them. They got T-shirts. Everybody got T-shirts, and so, uh, it was just a, a fun day, but, uh, a way for Eddie County to, um, have some good press as well. And so, I, I was excited to be a part of that. Um, we are working, currently working with the city. Did you want to say anything?
No, I just want to thank Campfire Industries for everything that you guys did. We really do appreciate it, and you guys are great partners to work with. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, is it appropriate for them to come up here? Be recognized?
Yeah.
Sure, would love to do that.
Yes.
Yeah, we can do that, too.
Yeah.
I'd like to get a picture.
You got a big in there.
Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Yeah, let's get some pictures.
Mr. Chairman?
I think that's a good idea.
Yes.
What are their names?
You'd be the only one.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know who they are.
Matthew Tanner.
My name's Jason Smith.
And I'm Mark Holland.
And this is my.
And I'm Ernie.
All right, one, two, three. Thank you, guys, so much.
And, and, and next year, Ernie's going to have a beard to match y'all.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
He's going to start working on it.
Is that a requirement for the Campfire Services?
Yeah, gotta have it.
Damn.
I just want to recognize this young man. He has sat through over an hour's worth of meetings with just being so amazing, so that's pretty.
Patient.
He was.
Good job, buddy.
Yep.
Good job.
We're already planning for next year, so.
Good deal.
We're making this an annual event.
There's a reward in that.
Aw, he's getting a badge. Yay.
Thanks very much.
I love the beard. My husband has a really nice beard.
He'd fit right in, wouldn't he? Yep.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What a kind of, fuck the guy.
Right now, I'm, uh, talking with the city of Carlsbad. Actually, I have a meeting over there later this afternoon, and we're, uh, working on a Loving Hour Highway Cleanup. That's what we're going to call it.
Nice.
Uh, and so, we're looking at November fourteenth. That date will be finalized this afternoon, uh, but we've already got some partnership, NMDOT, because that, that road, the Loving Highway, is city, county, and state. And so, NMDOT, hopefully, if they're available, will be committing their electronic signs to be, for safety reasons. Um, thank you to Sheriff Cage. He, uh, said he'd get his CAT team out there, which I didn't know what that was until I talked to him, but it's the Community Action Team, Traffic Team, to help with traffic. So, thank you so much, Sheriff Cage. Uh, Marathon Oil will be partnering with us. I'm not sure how yet, but Marathon Oil, uh, and I've got a call into Conoco because they're both kind of located off the Loving Highway. Um, thank you Chairman Carlson, who's going to kick it off for us because it's in his district, and so, uh, he'll be out there kicking it off for us. And then Calvani Pecans is going to let us start it right there, uh, at their location. So, that's what we've got coming up. And then the newsletter, I got a lot of great feedback. I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to read the, our very first monthly newsletter. I sent it to everybody, and so I had some great feedback from staff and the community. I've got a, a pretty good-sized, uh, mailing, emailing list, and so I, I got a lot of great feedback working on November's. Um, if you all got my email, I've asked department heads and elected officials to send in, um, staff that has gone above and beyond, or even just their whole department. I've had a few responses for that, uh, but we'll be looking at getting that newsletter out the last week in October. So, that's it for my update. Does anybody have any questions or anything?
Nope, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Commissioner Carlson needs a special vest, though, to wear when he.
We will have, we will have safety vests.
Yeah.
So.
I need a blinking light.
A blinking light?
I bet Commissioner Carlson.
Thank you.
No, he needs a special one.
I bet I do. Uh, any other updates?
I have a couple of quick announcements. Um, we're pretty much the same in finance all the time, but we've been really busy lately. We've been trying to finish up the audit. Um, Jessica and I have been going through our lease accounting software conversion, keeping track of all of our leases. Um, we also, um, have been short a payroll person since the end of July, uh, so Jessica's been taking on extra duties. Here in a couple of weeks, we will be short an accounts payable person, so I'll be down thirty percent almost of my staff, so, uh, Jessica and I will be taking on some more stuff. So, I just ask everyone, you know, please be patient with us. We're going to be really busy for the fall here until we get, um, someone else hired and we get someone else back, so. Um, and then also, I kind of wanted to give an update on some of the money, the funds we've been receiving. As you guys know, this commission meeting, you know, the sheriff was just up here talking about the HIDA grant. Uh, Josh was just up here about donation we received. It seems like every commission meeting, we have donations and grants we're approving and recognizing. So, I just kind of wanted to give a quick update. Um, right now, we have about eighteen active, uh, grants totaling award amount of about a hundred and twenty-one million dollars. Now, if you take off FEMA grants, we still have about seventeen active grants totaling about twenty million dollars. So, that's really huge for the county. Majority of that, um, the grants are for the road department, um, or road projects, I should say. Um, the biggest amount of money is for the roads. Uh, the sheriff office, uh, they alone have about five active grants that they have in their department, uh, so that's really good. And then also donations, we have about eighteen active donations, um, that still need to be spent from the county totaling about two-point-five million dollars. So, again, a lot of donations, a lot of grants, so I just kind of wanted to bring that to you guys' attention. So, that's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department updates? Okay, moving on. Uh, emergency business. Do we have any emergency business?
We do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, no emergency business. Any legislative update?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I have a quick update for you. Last week, uh, the Legislative Finance Committee met in Santa Fe. Uh, most of it, it was, you know, was remote, but they did have a few members there that were present. Wish I had some good news. There was a lot of good news this morning. Maybe I should have started, that's all I can say. But, but anyway, uh, just kind of giving a, a little quick update and, and reiterate a few things that, that Al spoke on this morning. But the committee met Wednesday through Friday, covered a, a number of, of topics, but, uh, first day, they talked about jobs. New Mexico saw, saw a loss of about seventy thousand five hundred jobs through August due to the Corona, uh, situation there. But the good news is, in the last couple of months, they've seen about a third of those jobs recover. Uh, GRT had performed better than predicted for the fiscal year twenty, but they expect to see a brunt of that, uh, downturn come in fiscal year twenty-one. New Mexico, uh, saw about a two-point-one billion dollars in reserve for, at the end of fiscal year twenty, which was, was good news, but because of the uncertainty around, uh, the business survival during, during the COVID, uh, we, and whether or not we see another stimulus package has things kind of in limbo, of course, as we all know. So, uh, talking about the stimulus package, it had a big impact on our, on our economy in New Mexico, uh, propping it up. About a fourth of the workforce, uh, we see in New Mexico right now supported by the stimulus package, uh, that was, has come out before. Uh, about thirty percent of the wages in New Mexico are supported by government jobs. So, we're kind of hanging on the thread as far as that goes. Seven-hundred-and-fifty million in the stimulus went to the general fund and local government allocations, but the fear still is out there with the Legislative Finance Committee of how much of this money is actually going to be able to qualify for use, uh, based on the requirements from the stimulus money. So, that, that fear still remains. It's going to meet the standards required, and so that means that if it doesn't, then the two-point-one billion we see in reserves may be called upon to fill the gaps once everything, the accounting's done and comes back and says, well, this money didn't, uh, didn't meet the standards. So, Thursday, uh, we talked about school districts, and the school district discussion was, was very, uh, uh, exciting because, uh, the superintendents of New Mexico, I sent Al a letter yesterday. Superintendents of New Mexico wrote a letter to the Secretary of Education, uh, on the fifteenth of September, expressing their displeasure and how the, uh, guidelines, uh, were being disseminated out to the school districts and how it was all over the board. People at one time were told that the shields were okay to use. Uh, they order in shields, come find out the shields weren't approved, so now they got to go back and spend more money, do other things to get masks. And so, it's all over the board. But I was, I was very amused with, uh, with John Arthur Smith, Senator John Arthur Smith, who's the chairman of that committee. Uh, the first question he asked of the, uh, of the president of the School Superintendent's Association was, how in the world did you get all superintendents to agree on something? And they agreed on that letter. And the letter basically said that, uh, and unanimously said that they want to see, uh, local control come back to the, to the school districts. That's the only way you're going to be able to get things right and get it done correctly in an expedient manner. Uh, they were all behind that, uh, really hammered on some of the things that they'd seen that, uh, the school unions had not done, uh, and, and had really felt like that that was kind of a, a stumbling point. On Friday, they talked about the COVID and the city, decisions being made on the economic basis of how COVID has affected our state. Uh, Dr. Scarcie, and I never say his name right, explained the process and how the new, um, Advisory Board was actually kind of driving the process, and their decisions make decisions that, uh, implement the different types of, of, uh, guidelines and rules we're supposed to go by. One of the things that was brought up is how that board was formed, and then we heard from Dr. Peach. Dr. Jim Peach, who's an economist we're all familiar with, he spoke on that, and he showed displeasure with the board that, that the Advisory Board had been formed, but there was actually no econo, economist on that board. So, there was no economic consideration going out as far as what these, uh, directions are coming from there. Here comes the bad part. Dr. Peach, uh, gave an overview of the economy, and it wasn't very encouraging. He said that he predicts that it'll be twenty-twenty-five before we see New Mexico come back to the levels we saw in January of twenty-twenty as far as the economy does. Uh, he gave reasons for that. He said, of course, uh, we're seeing , uh, more downturn in the oil and gas business. Uh, Al kind of chapped, touched on that a little bit this morning, but, uh, the problem is, is with the whole thing we know worldwide, we see in the news every day, is we don't have a consumption of oil and gas, and, and we see a surplus. But at the same time, in New Mexico, we see a downturn in the drilling activity, and, and as we know what follows that, we see a downturn in production. And that production, even though our prices may be up around that forty-dollar barrel, uh, that production continues to, to decline. And Dr. Peach, uh, said that, you know, he felt like that was, uh, one of the biggest things we're going to see on the economy in New Mexico is that downturn in production. Uh, these are all predictions. It's, I'm just, don't kill the messenger. I'm just telling you what was said during the meeting. Uh, but he felt like that at the end of this, that we're going to see an economy different than we've ever seen before. And what he qualified that by is, he said, we'll see more large, more large corporations in control of the economy than what we've seen. in control of the economy than what we've seen in the past, especially in New Mexico. Um, so, the other thing that he said is, we've got to find ways to make money for the state. And that's the big challenge, I think, we all face today, even in the, and Al had some discussions about this, uh, Dr. Peach is stating, we gotta have more taxes. And how do we generate taxes? We've got to have something that generates taxes, right? Uh, so those industries that are, that are being impacted by the Covid, that we know don't pay taxes like they did before, uh, and so we've got to do something to, to attract that and to get our economy back on its feet. Um, Senator Kernan, after this was over, I was very proud what she said. She said that, uh, and it's kind of in line with Al's letter that he sent out, she was very complimentary about Al's letter, but Senator Kernan, Kernan went on record and said that we've got to have more testing in southeast New Mexico to get our percentages down on, on our Covid, so we can get these kids back in school. Also, Representative Anderson, he expressed the displeasure with the advisory board and, and what's driving this. In the fact that their first meeting, from what he stated, and this is not firsthand, it's only going, what I can, what I know he stated, is the first, and I heard this from other, other legislators, the first meeting, the board decided that they're gonna meet secretly. That's basically all he got done. And then the story was, from what I heard from other legislators, the second meeting was to decide what their seal looked like before their commit. So basically, a nothing burger, for lack of better words. They're, they're not doing a lot other than just sitting in a holding pattern and doing what they're told to do. And this is hurting our economy. Uh, we'd like to see these schools reopen, and that was across the board from all the legislators. I think that if I could get a message that I heard in the three days of the meeting is that there's great concerns about the educational system in New Mexico from our they wanna get our kids back in school. And I think they're doing all they can do, uh, up to the fourth floor, and I'm not sure how much the fourth floor is listening to any of them right now, unfortunately. Uh, and I'm not picking on anybody, I'm just saying what I, what I heard. LFC, uh, will meet again in, on October the twenty-eighth. They're hoping to have more numbers as far as the stimulus package and what that's gonna look like for our economy for next year. Uh, a lot of things are being talked about for the upcoming session, but, but how the budget's gonna look. And, and how that's, hopefully they can hold their own. But, uh, the surplus is there, but they don't expect it to look very good in the first quarter twenty-one. Any questions?
I have a question.
No.
Question.
Are we getting marijuana?
Uh, no, but I, I did not hear that, uh, Commissioner McCutcheon, but I tell you what I did hear, and I failed to mention this, but I did hear, they did have a presentation from, uh, from the gambling board. And, uh, that's one thing that they had seen-
Really?
-that they may talk about, uh, trying to expand on online gambling and other things to look as a revenue source. They did talk about that.
Well, they're being creative.
Yeah. Geez. Anyway.
Commissioner Woods?
I don't have anything.
Uh, I would like, uh, one comment. I was at a gathering, uh, the other evening, and, uh, our representative Brown was there and, uh, him, her and I were talking, and she did say that she's working on about four bills. And, and I said, well, you know what? It'd be great if you come to our commission meeting and, uh, kinda updated us on those and kinda gave us a little insight as to the next, uh, session. And she said she would love to do that if somebody would contact her and set that up. So if we could do that, uh, I would love to hear that from, from our representative herself.
I didn't give a disclaimer, but I would've done that, but, uh, unfortunately, Senator Kernan was supposed to be here today. And so I didn't want them having, having them on top of each other here talking.
Yeah.
But Senator Kernan was summoned to Texas because in Austin area, the, uh, the school district's not open down there, so she's working in efficient, official capacity as a grandmother and helping her granddaughter stay online with her classes. So she apologized for that, and I should've mentioned that.
That's important work.
But, but what I'd like to see, what I'd like to see is maybe every other month or something, uh, leading up to the session or whenever they would agree to it, uh, to make that a, a regular thing is to have some of our legislators come in and address us and kinda tell us what they're working on and what they see coming, uh, forward in the future.
Like I said, they were, she was-
I mean, I, I love your perspective, but-
She was supposed to be here today to do that and-
If we could get it from the horse's mouth, it would be even better.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, because that's exactly what our plan has been. So I appreciate your reinforcement of that and, and support.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Legislators and elected officials, comments?
Good morning again.
Good morning.
Now, here's part of the problem with, uh, Representative Brown putting any kind of, uh, legislation, trying to promote any legislation. His last session, uh, Speaker of the House Brian Egoff didn't allow one Republican-sponsored bill to be heard on the House floor, not one. So, hopefully we don't see that again this time around, but don't, don't count on it. The, the tactics are getting really ugly. And, um, you can count on recreational marijuana, Commissioner, you can count on that. That's gonna get pushed through with no problem. And, uh-
Marijuana and gambling.
We, yeah, marijuana and gambling, that's a, that's, boy, that's gonna save our state, isn't it?
Wow.
That's disgusting. But, and again, I'm never at a loss for words, right? But, uh, there's something that, that needs to be, uh, considered is today is the first day of early voting, last day for registration, correct ma'am?
I was obviously gonna say-
Oh, well, I'll let you say that, I, I, I'll let you talk more on that, but I, I, the, the reason I wanted to point that out is there are two, uh, constitutional amendments on the ballot that are, frankly, they're not good, in, in my humble opinion. Uh, the first one is changing the PRC, the Public Regulation Commission, and that would change it from five people who are voted on by the people to three people who are appointed by the governor.
Never take a position out of the hands of the people.
That is horrible. I cannot, I mean, that is just blatant power grab. The second is changing the constitution. If you remember, they, they attempted, they, they passed a law that was unconstitutional by our constitution, New Mexico constitution, which would've changed my, personally, it would've changed mine and, uh, John Henry's terms of office, Commissioner Henry's terms of office.
And two.
And yours too. Okay, I was thinking there was somebody else that was involved in that. We took that in a writ of mandamus to the New Mexico Supreme Court and won. And I wasn't elected for six years, I was elected for four years, that's what I should serve. Um, this, the second constitutional amendment that is proposed is to leave that in the hands of the legislature. So they could foreseeably cut my term of office, or Robbins, or anybody's, to two years if they want to, or extend them if they like you. Um, all in the name of streamlining the election process. So, I, I would, I would urge everybody to, to educate yourselves on, uh, you know, the folks that are listening also, uh, educate yourselves on what is on the ballot. Uh, these are two very scary constitutional amendments that we do not need. So, things are going well at the sheriff's office, uh, we're, we're, uh, just doing our thing still. We've got some, uh, other, speaking of Ms. Roberta's, uh, announcements, we're looking at even more, uh, money coming in. We've had some discussions and I know, uh, the, the county manager has, um, spoken with, I think we're talking with Chevron right now about some, about a, an infusion of money from them for some equipment. So, there's always something coming around the corner that we're looking at and, uh, it's nice to be in a county where we're appreciated. So, thank y'all for all your hard work, and I'll let you get on with the meeting.
Thank you Sheriff.
Thank Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment if you-
That's your time.
As an elected official, um, we start, we started voting today in Carlsbad in Artisia. The deadline to register to vote is today. We started absentee mail-out today. We have bonds and amendments on the ballot, like Sheriff said, we have booklets on those. You can pick those up at my office or the Artisia office. We're trying to get those distributed, so if you have any place you wanna lay them out or you have the, my, people might frequent, that they could pick them up, you have sample ballots. It's all record numbers so far. Yep. And I wanna thank everybody that helped get us started this morning. Brian's crew was hanging signs, um, Jason's crew was putting up stuff, and everybody was helping Carol and Jerry for getting the word out about elections. It's gonna take all of us, so.
So on Election Day, how many polling places will you have on the day?
Thirteen BCCs open.
On the day?
Election Day, yes.
And so are the polls open today?
They're open today.
I'm sorry?
Ryan's already voted.
Just the early voting sites, two of them.
Oh, terrific. Okay. It's important to vote.
Why is it to work out more of that?
Okay. Any other comments from, uh, the elected officials or legislators? Okay, moving on, county manager comments.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, you will see a letter that I, kind of an op-ed piece. Um, I appreciate feedback that I received before putting that out there. I, I think that from comments I've had from, from Commissioners, there's a, there's a big concern about, um, what we're doing as a community and how our students in our community are being affected. And, uh, one of the concerns I have is if we don't make a change, if we keep doing the same thing, we're gonna get the same result, and that's not beneficial for our community. So, um, I appreciate support, um, in helping inform the public. They have choices they can make and just encourage them to be informed and to, to make appropriate choices that will help change the outcome. I think that's, that's important for what we're doing. I've been participating with, uh, Commissioner Crockett on, uh, a couple of committees, one specifically around, uh, NMC, Carlsbad. There's a community movement to try and help bolster what may be going on there at NMSU, Carlsbad relative to the, to the home campus. And so there's, there's a fair amount of community support in that regard. So, I think if things progress, there's an opportunity to broaden that aperture for that community college and make it, uh, even more effective than it has been. And it's been reasonably effective between early college and what those kids can do and nursing program and many others. I think there's a lot of industry opportunity to be involved there, and there's a lot of interest in industry to be involved there. So, um, kinda stay tuned for that. You know, just recognize, um, and I know each, each of you Commissioners have your favorite district or your district and your favorites within the district, but there's a lot of good activity occurring within the county that is either county's, county-supported or county-sponsored. And I think, I hope that your constituents in the broader community see the outcomes of those efforts, whether it's between Public Works, Sheriff's Department, the, the community service, um, you know, the clerk's office, the treasurer's office. I mean, there's lots of things, it's a busy, it's a busy time of year, and there's just a tremendous amount going on that our county employees are supporting and sponsoring. So, um, I appreciate all that they do. It makes our community better and, and I think the things that we've, we've accomplished, um, this year, as we come towards the end of the calendar year, have been extensive. There have been a fair amount of monies committed, but you see the visible outcome from that in the community. And we're gonna continue to try and do that, um, you know, changes at the, the landfill and, and the convenience stations with activities in Public Works, the amount of roads being done, the work that, that the county employees are doing within that. Again, just allowing us to do more with the resources that we have, so. Appreciate all of the efforts there from all the departments. And, uh, we'll continue to work strong. I think we have a sound budget and a sound outlook, and we'll be successful with the things that we've outlined, so. Any questions, uh, uh, let me know. None of you are bashful about reaching out, so. Uh, and I'm, I'm happy to do that. Don't ever feel like, well, I shouldn't call or I shouldn't text. That's, that's the movie, right? I'm, I'm here to s- to do what you need us to do, so.
I don't think we have any problems with that.
Awesome. So that's it, thanks, thanks very much.
He just doesn't like those six o'clock calls, I don't know why.
I don't mind.
Commissioner Crockett?
Well, as Al said, it's been pretty busy, um, of course with, uh, the healthcare committee, two healthcare committees we're working on, and then the NMSU, um, looking at going maybe towards a community-based college. We've had lots and lots of meetings. We had a really good meeting with the mayor, Jason, Al and myself regarding the southeast, uh, bypass, southwest bypass. I have southeast on my mind, 'cause I wanted to have that done before I was done with my term. But the mayor and, um, John Low are definitely on board with whatever help they can provide and hopefully maybe some financial support they can provide as well. And the grant applications are rolling into the Department of Development. That committee met for the first time last week, and Mike Courier is chairing that committee, and I'm proud to say that we have a member of each, um, banking institution and including banking institutions from Artisia and then the credit union, Financial Security Credit Union as well. So, it's a really good committee and I think that they'll make a lot of progress. And the Department of Development's been busy helping people, but it's been, people have been genuinely, um, open and open to providing all the documentations that they need to apply for those loans, so it's been good. And I've been working with Jeff Murray, our consultant in DC on an, across-the-board kind of common sense approach letter to send to President Trump about the energy development on federal lands. And I think it's a really good letter and we're hoping for full commission support on that to just send a letter that everybody's been given today to look at. And the last thing I wanna say is, Al, you just finished your one year with us and congratulations, you've done an amazing job and we appreciate it. Hear nothing but great things about you throughout the campus here and throughout the community, so appreciate it, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Perfect. Commissioner McCutcheon?
I don't have much, kinda along the same lines as, uh, as Commissioner Crockett. You know, we've had three things that, that Al's been spearheading, is trying to get our kids back to school. It's the oil and gas development on, on federal lands and then also the Ryan well interruption that we've kind of had, and that's, that's a-
I forgot to report on that.
That one's a little frustrating. So, uh, but, uh, uh, do really appreciate Al, I know his character and trust his judgment. And so, uh, really, really, really grateful that he sits at the helm of the county, so I know what I'm coming.
Okay. Mr. Wood?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Uh, I just wanna reiterate what the, the sheriff said about, uh, the, uh, constitutional amendments that we're gonna be seeing on the ballot. You know, it's a, it's an affront to our, our democracy within the state of New Mexico when, when we even talk about taking an elected position out of the hands of the people and putting it in the hands of another politician. That just doesn't seem kosher to me, and I'm hoping that, uh, other people within the state see it the same way as I do, and because, uh, that just seems wrong. So, that's the only comment I have, so thank you. Okay, we're going to go into executive commission if I could, uh, I mean, executive session, if I could have a motion to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into executive session in accordance with the State of New Mexico Open Meetings Act, Section ten dash fifteen dash one H seven, which authorizes the Board of County Commissioners to go into executive session to discuss and only discuss threatening or pending litigation with a FEMA update from Roberta Smith.
Second.
You have a motion, a second call for the vote?
Crockett? Yes. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
When you come back.
Uh, you give us twenty minutes?
So, uh, ten thirty? Ten thirty?
Ten thirty?
Ten thirty. We'll have to make it enough.
Yeah.
Are we going to take a break?
Yes, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Come back ten twenty-five.
Ten.
Ten twenty-five.
Yeah.
Or ten thirty-five.
Ten thirty-five.
Ten thirty-five.
Ten thirty-five.
We can't count. We need to go back to school.